Good evening and welcome to the Candidates Forum for the Democratic Primary Election for the Bloomfield Town Council. My name is Deb Holen and I will serve as the moderator this evening. I want to thank League of Women Voters member Joan Twigs for coordinating this event, and Carol Mulready and Rachel Schmidt from the League for assisting this evening. This forum features the candidates who will appear on Row B of your primary election ballot. Earlier this evening, we hosted a separate forum with the six candidates on Row A. I encourage you to watch both sessions to help inform your choices for the election on September 14th. For the forum, I will ask each candidate to answer the same question, and I will rotate the order of candidates answering. Candidates have been informed that they can provide a lengthy answer or a short answer, whichever they prefer, and can even simply state that they have nothing to add. We will get through as many questions as we have time for in our session, and then each candidate will provide a one-minute closing statement. And now I will introduce you to the candidates on Row B. I will read the bios that they have submitted in alphabetical order. Stephanie Calhoun is a 28-year resident in the town of Bloomfield, who is deeply rooted and committed to her community. She is a 40-year employee of the state of Connecticut. Her sons, Thomas and Stephen, are Bloomfield graduates. She was an endorsed Democrat for Town Council in 2019. Her goal is to focus on strengthening the relationships between our seniors and young people through technology. Welcome, Stephanie.
Thank you so much.
John Coleman has been a Bloomfield resident for 49 years and was a previous member of the Bloomfield Town Council for 10 years, deputy mayor for four of those years, previous chairman and member of the Bloomfield Town Planning and Zoning Commission, 20 years, and previous chairman and member of the Bloomfield Inland Wetlands Commission, 20 years. Presently Chairman of the Bloomfield Design Review Board and Vice Chairman of the Bloomfield Housing Authority, President and CEO of the Rideshare Company, married with six grown children. Welcome, John. Attorney Greg Davis has been a Bloomfield resident for 24 years. He currently chairs the Bloomfield Library Building Committee, and he is a longstanding member of the Bloomfield DTC. Attorney Davis has chaired the Hartford Public Library Board of Directors since 2015, and he served as Vice Chair of the Connecticut Judicial Selection Commission in 2019 and 2020. He is a deacon at the First Cathedral in Bloomfield. Welcome, Greg. Patricia Davis is a former member of the Board of Education. She will bring to the Town Council a wealth of information on the importance of parent and family advocacy. Ms. Davis has served as PTO President, Representative for the Raiders and Warhawks, PLTI, PSE graduate, co-chair of ABC, current Chair of the ABC Equity Committee. She also serves as President of AFSCME Council for Local 318. Welcome, Patricia. Dr. Suzette DeBeetham-Brown is a wife and mother. She has lived in Bloomfield for the last 20 years. She is currently on Town Council, serving as the mayor. She has been employed with the West Hartford-Bloomfield Health District for 15-plus years. Suzette has served as an ordained minister, a youth advocate for the Urban League of Greater Hartford, chaplain for the Bloomfield Police Department, and Chair of the Bloomfield Community Awareness Task Force. Welcome, Suzette. And Rickford Curtin is passionate about his community, working on the council over the last four years with his colleagues to contribute to the wonderful town, to work at initiatives that would serve today's residents. He believes that the combination of his accounting background and leadership experience give him a unique ability to bridge the gap between practice and theory and plain English. Welcome, Rickford. Okay, we're going to move to our questions, and for the first question, I'll ask the question, and here it is. What is the one issue in Bloomfield that you are passionate about working on? What specific steps will you personally take if you are elected? And we will start with Ms. Calhoun. You're on mute.
Thank you. So, as stated in my bio, it's extremely important for me to view and face and touch base with our young people and our seniors. Attempting to bridge the gap between the two, it's been tough over the last, over my tenure on council due to the COVID pandemic. But as soon as we are fully opened and we can be touchy-feely, it's my intention to get greatly involved, become greatly involved with our seniors more than I have been because of the pandemic. It's important that we get the ideas from specifically our seniors. That way, we can go back and encourage our youth and our young people to make sure they each want to bridge the gap and reach over and have that type of relationship. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. And then we'll go to Mr. Davis.
Economic development is the issue that is most passionate for me going forward in terms of revitalizing the town center, particularly the Whittenberry Mall and the other plazas in town, to really make them a destination for both the people in town and for people out of town coming to the town, to contribute to growing our tax base and our revenue resources so that we can provide the programs and resources to the residents of the community without having to increase taxes across the board. So, increasing revenue, economic development with a focus on the town center.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, and then Ms. Davis.
Good evening. The issue that would be most germane to me would be the completion of the Bloomfield Library Building Project. I'm currently chairing the Library Building Committee, and it is our charge to effectively, economically, and responsibly maximize the library space and bring a modern 21st century library system to town. We call it big, bold, and beautiful is what we want to do. And what we are proposing right now, and what I will be on a referendum in November, is that we have a new Prosser Library and also an expanded and renovated fake McMahon-Wintonbury Library on Blue Hills. When I first took on the role as Chair of the Library Building Committee, what was most important to me before agreeing to do so is that there would be a commitment from the town not to look solely at Prosser but to look at the entire system throughout Bloomfield so that all parts of our town are represented fairly and equitably. I'm excited to say that we have a committee of 17 people, nine voting members. We've had 27 meetings, five special meetings. We've met and presented before the council. We've had public information sessions, and we've really done, in my opinion, a tremendous job of engaging the community. We did a survey where we received responses from over 1,700 people in the town, and to a person, people are really excited about a new library system here in town. So, again, the issue that is most important to me over the next couple of years because of the charge that we have is to make sure that we can bring this library building project to fruition, assuming all goes well in November with the referendum. We hope to have two beautiful buildings in 2023 and 2024, so that I would say is what's driving me right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Davis and then Ms. DeBeetham-Brown.
Okay, good evening, and once again, and again, thank you for this opportunity. For me, I have been asked over the years, why do you want to get involved in politics? And for the most part, it's not really about, for me, the politics part, it's about the advocacy. And I think what's most important and what I intend to do and what I hope that people will get out of this is the opportunity to understand how important a voice is for the common folk, for the people who don't normally politic or who don't normally get involved with politics. So, in my past, I've always worked with families and engaged in the community, especially with our youth, having two boys that were very active in town, graduates of Bloomfield High School, and me being involved as a PTO. I've learned so much over the years. And again, just a common person who wanted to advocate for better for our town and our community, and with an emphasis on families, on families who don't normally have an opportunity to have their voice, I want to be that relatable person that people can come to, and if they have questions or fear the process, know that they can come to me, and I will be that advocate or that voice to help them go and find out what is needed and understand about the school system and how important the taxes are that are paid by the individuals in town to our school system, to develop that community place where people feel comfortable with the Town Council, you know? And I am a natural fighter by, just because of who I am. I come from a very strong background. My mom was, always had us out preaching and practicing in church and worshiping, so all of that goes together with building confidence. So, I think what's most important to me right now in this venture, and I think that we have an excellent opportunity with the team that's in place, is to bring continuity and people give the voices of the unheard or that aren't normally heard an opportunity to understand, learn, and grow within Bloomfield. So, for me, that advocacy piece is very important, the relatable, to have people be relatable and understand the local politics and how important they are, and just be able to, you know, bring that onus and that oneness to town so that we are all, all of our voices are heard. So, I'm hoping that I will be able to do that as a member of the Town Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. DeBeetham-Brown and then Mr. Curtin.
Thank you very much. I think the topic that's most important to me is public engagement. One of the things that we have learned during these past two years is it's extremely important to make partnerships, whether it's with the surrounding towns, West Hartford and Windsor, or whether it's with our medical professionals, Dr. Reggie Eady, Trinity Health New England, Charter Oak, Houses of Worship. We need to have those public engagements so that our community will behold that the needs that are in our community, that if we don't have those services, we can make partnerships to make sure that those services come to our town. We made partnerships to get COVID-19 testing and COVID-19 vaccines. We made partnership to get PPPs for our residents and our workers. We made partnerships to be able to deliver food. It's really important to make sure that we have public engagements with our residents and with our surrounding town. Thank you.
Thank you, and Mr. Curtin.
Thank you, Deb, and I first want to say thank you and the League of Women Voters for hosting this Town Hall. I think it's important for residents to be engaged and understand the candidates who are running for office and get an insight to what their vision is for the town, so I appreciate the work that you are doing around this. I have multiple passion for the last four years being on the council. The one important thing I believe for us to be able to accomplish anything and to be able to provide a level service within the town of Bloomfield is our financial stability, and it's more in question over the last few years with COVID and, you know, folks being out of work. You know, municipalities have to find ways how to streamline their budget and working with the Board of Education and other town departments to find ways how to save. We are here custodians of the taxpayers, hard-earned money, dollars, and we have to find ways how to invest that, how to consolidate town resources. I think most importantly in order for us to do that, we need to invest, invest in our infrastructure to be able to have an ability where businesses want to move here in the town of Bloomfield to invest. So, I think that's important. That's something that I want to work on, something that I believe it's important. And at the same time, economic development, in order for us to continue to provide the same level service that we have for the last four years, we need to invest, bring new investment within the town of Bloomfield.
Thank you. We'll move on to the second question. What is the appropriate balance of town services and taxes? Do you have any specific proposals to cut or enhance any programs? And for this question, we'll start with Mr. Coleman and then go to Ms. Davis next.
Thank you for that question. Obviously, that balance is critical to, to having a healthy community. And I think, as Rickford touched upon, I think the, the area that I think we can make some, some real strides in terms of is consolidating the backroom services between the town side and the board side. There's a lot of duplicity in terms of noneducational services that the board provides that could be combined, in my opinion, with the town side in terms of human resources, in terms of purchasing, in terms of maintenance. All of those things, I think, would go a long way to certainly begin to trend in the right direction to, to maintain a lower cost of providing services to the community, while at the same time, as both Rickford and I have touched upon, having a strong concentration on attracting additional growth and expansion in the community to, to provide revenue, to broaden the tax of the, the tax base and provide additional revenue to the community so that we both have revenue growth at the same time that we're reducing the cost of services, which would allow us to provide either additional services or expansions of services we're already providing.
Thank you. Ms. Davis and then Mr. Curtin. Ms. Davis, you're on mute.
Just to really agree with what John has just shared with you, but I think most importantly for me is just the piece of communication, we have to be able to bring that balance with communication, open communication, clear and precise education with all of the entities and the things that are already in place, and I think that we can do that if we have open communication and share that with everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Curtin, and then we'll go to...
Can you please repeat the question if you don't mind?
Absolutely. What is the appropriate balance of town services and taxes? Do you have any specific proposals to cut or enhance any programs? And it's Mr. Curtin, and then we'll go to Ms. Calhoun afterwards.
Yeah, I said, I think John had mentioned it. I believe that this current council had worked with the Board of Education to streamline the noneducational departments that I believe too often we have two entities and we're duplicating some of the services. So, we're talking about HR, we're talking about payroll, we're talking about IT, and the finance department. If we can find ways how to streamline that, I think it will save the town money. In addition to that, there's a lot of overhead costs for the town, and I think with a new town manager, he's going to come in and he's going to do some evaluation to see exactly where we can make cuts, but I believe that we have some of that planned in place to be able to streamline some of the resources within the town.
Thank you. We'll go to Ms. Calhoun and then Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Deb. I just want to say I fully agree with all of what was said beforehand. I just would like to add, and it's been pretty much stated in a different way, there are duplication, duplication of services, as has been said. The review of that, again, with the new town manager, I truly agree he will have to review and put forth within next year's budget how we can streamline a lot of those services and hopefully have an agreement between the town and the board. It's really important that we really minimize, again, any types of tax increases on our residents. We are now in recovery from COVID. Everyone has not fully been there. We have a lot of families that have fallen through the cracks, and it's important that we identify those families but also not enable them with tax, additional tax burden. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis and then Ms. DeBeetham-Brown.
Boy, I think that's a tough question, and I would say in this environment that we're in, if there are opportunities to save money through consolidation, as was, which was previously discussed between the Board of Ed and the town, I would be for that. But I believe where we are now, we need to do everything we can to enhance our services. I want to see more dollars allocated for our seniors walking the town and meeting with people, people very concerned about their roads. I want to see more money, you know, doled out for roads, and again, the big driver for this is economic development, right? Anyone knows who works on budgets that, you know, expenses cannot be maintained unless the revenues go up, and I think we have to be creative, thoughtful, and impactful as to how we go about increasing revenue, because I don't know what type of revenue savings could come through consolidation, but I do know that we have a lot of services and people are struggling right now, and I don't know that this is a time to think about cutting services. We should be doing everything that we can to increase services, and no one wants to talk about an increase in taxes, and I'm not suggesting that, but what I am suggesting is that we have to be more aggressive with respect to adding to the revenue base of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. DeBeetham-Brown.
Thank you very much, and I would say that I agree to some level with everything that has been said. I know that this current council is working with the Board of Ed to consolidate some services. I know that we've started trying to look at the financial aspect of it, our MUNA system. So, there is conversation about trying to consolidate some of those backend departments. I also agree, however, that there is a balance that needs to take place. We need to make sure that the services for our seniors, for our youth, for our young adults, and that's the age of 19 plus, that we have services, intentional services for them, that they can come to the town and they can find, whether it's resume helping or whether it's bingo, or whether it's learning STEM, that there are services, whether it's helping with your, your winterization or your rent, that we have services that service our entire resident of the town. But we have to make sure that we are looking at economic development, sustainable economic development, deliberate and intentional economic development for our town and what we want our town to look like, so that the balance has to take place. It's a delicate balance, right? Because everyone wants and no one wants to pay higher taxes. So, I think it's incumbent upon us as Town Council to be creative, to think outside the box, to be able to bring that balance for the betterment of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move to question three. How do you feel Bloomfield has done with its response to COVID-19? What would you have done differently, if anything? And what do you suggest moving forward, including with new federal money coming in? And for this question, we will start with Mr. Davis and then Ms. DeBeetham-Brown.
Thank you. I think the town and the council have done a tremendous job with respect to COVID and our response. I know that the council set up a COVID recovery response effort, and that has been tremendous as far as opportunities for vaccinations, testings, partnerships with the local Houses of Worship. We, the town has been engaged primarily through the council with the food delivery over the winter for those in need, and I think right now with funds coming through the stimulus, I think there should be conversations with the residents to find out what people want. I do know that there is a need for dollars to go into infrastructure, but I do think that it's important to hear from our residents to find out how we can best use the funds that are coming in from the federal government. But all in all, I think that the council has been very proactive and doing a wonderful job and doing the best we can to support those families in need and those individuals, and just been terrific connections with the hospitals and local churches. So, I think there's more to do, but we've done a very good job to date. Thank you.
Ms. DeBeetham-Brown, and then it'll be Ms. Calhoun next.
So, I believe the council had to pivot. We had plans when we were elected back in 2019. We had great plans of things that we were going to do, whole town halls, have retreats, all those things, and then March of 2020 happened and everything was shut down, and we had to pivot quickly. I believe we did a great job in pivoting. We formed relationships so that people of knowledge could come and speak to our residents about this COVID-19 and what it means to us and how serious this was. We were able to get testing done here in our town. We were able to have COVID-19 vaccine done here in our town. We made relationships that probably would have taken years to form with the hospitals, with our Houses of Worship, with our businesses, and everyone stepped up, everyone leaned in to help each other. So, I think we did a tremendous job with what we had. We learned a lot. The learning curve was very steep, and we committed to it for the betterment of our residents. We made partnerships with the Prosperity Foundation to deliver over 3,000 boxes of food and produce. We did things that we never thought we would do, stand-up clinics in Houses of Worship. We had testing sites on the town green. So, it was a challenging time, but I believe that we faced that challenge. Now, we have seen some things that we cannot unsee. We've seen that there are underlying conditions with our residents. There is low to no insurance for our residents, so those issues have to be addressed. We have formed relationships with community health workers that will go and knock on doors of our residents and find out what their needs are medically. We have relationships where we have hospitals that will come in and do testing and here in our town. So, those relationships that we have formed, we need to strengthen those relationships. We need to make sure that if it's diabetes, if it's cancer, if it's hypertension, that those needs of our residents, those public health needs are met, and once again, the relationships that we have formed, we will strengthen. There's no way that we can go back. We can't put the genie back in the bottle, but we also want to make sure that we're not caught in this situation again, that the structures are put in place, that if for some reason something like this happens again, we would not be starting from nothing. We'll be starting from experience, and we're also clear that the Delta virus is still out there, and now the new virus is coming. So, we have to make sure that that education, that relationship with the West Hartford-Bloomfield Health District is still strengthened and still intact that we can provide for all our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Calhoun and then Mr. Curtin.
Yes, Deb, thank you. As we've heard and we know, the stimulus monies are ending from the federal government. As I mentioned early on, there are families that may have fallen through the cracks that may not have been identified as of yet. I believe a great deal of that money, the federal, additional federal government monies should go with partnering with our social service agencies here in town and other towns where there is, there will be an additional need for food distribution. I know our churches are, will continually, they will always step up and fill that gap. But again, I do believe a great deal of the federal monies that are in place should come to our social service agencies, especially, you know, as we know, you know, we're here for Bloomfield. So, we should get our dollars to be able to service and serve our residents and make them aware that there is a helping hand, there continues to be a helping hand here in Bloomfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Curtin, followed by Ms. Davis.
Yes, so I have to say that I believe Bloomfield led the way on the responsiveness to COVID. Not only the leadership with the community at large came together, I think folks were responsible, getting tested. I think the last data that I saw, I think 100% of our seniors 65 and above were fully vaccinated. We had a vaccinated location on the town green during the summer. The communication to the public was out there. We could do more to improve the numbers with the younger folks, because I think across the board, there's some challenges there. Obviously, with COVID, there's a lot of negative information, bad information out there, but I believe that Bloomfield is in a good place. I think a lot of the collaborations with the mayor and working with the governor's office, Dr. Eady, who's leading the charge within Connecticut to get folks vaccinated, I think the communication and the resources in town. Now, looking forward, Bloomfield right now is positioned to receive $6.2 million in federal funding that came through the state, received 3.1 million of that so far. In 2022, we received about 3.1 million. We have an ability to, not only to take care of the phone Uh, we have an ability to, not only to take care of the folks within our town, but also look at some longstanding issues, whatever, infrastructure and so on. So I think we are positioned. Uh, you know, I just want to say to the families who are watching, who have lost loved ones, uh, we sympathize with you. And uh, we just have to keep uh working at this. It's a new norm. We're never gonna go back to where things were pre um COVID. Uh, but I think Bloomfield is ahead of the curve, doing the right things to make sure that we're uh, we're fully uh getting fully vaccinated and we're, we're being safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Davis, and then Mr. Coleman.
Yes, I'd just like to add, you know, just a little bit because COVID nineteen was a worldwide pandemic. And when we were thrust into this situation, the whole world was in a panic about how it should be handled and how we should move forward. And to your question and the way you presented it, I think Bloomfield did a phenomenal job at, with handling the situation that the world was experiencing. Um, to the points that the colleagues on the, have already spoken to, you know, uh, we got in front of it. I think the mayor and the town council got in front of what was necessary to make sure that our residents felt safe, that they had adequate opportunity to be tested. Um, in addition to the fact that the vaccination um process is being handled very well here in our town. I've heard many residents, you know, commend the town and the mayor for getting in front of um this situation as a state employee. And um, you know, I'm having a lot of issues as a union person with people that are complaining about some of the mandates that are in place when the bottom line is that we just have to keep people safe and make sure that people feel secure. And with the art funding that's coming in, I think it would be, we would be remiss if the town council didn't ensure that the members of the community are made aware of the American Rescue Plan. And like Rick, Rickford has mentioned that Bloomfield is receiving six, six million, six million dollars, you know, to allocate to our towns and make sure that it's not in just in brick and mortar and make sure that the residents are having some buy-in and how those funds are disseminated once it is actually in our hands to do so. I know the first part, the first three million has been um given to the town, and they are working on a plan. I had an opportunity to sit down with um uh, uh, one of the agents that is gonna be managing it with the town manager um in regard to how those funds will be dispersed. And the Alliance for Bloomfield Children held the town hall so that we're bringing in our community and our residents to make them aware that the funds are available so that they can have a voice. And we continue to move forward with it. And like they said, this is not going anywhere. This is our new normal. And I think that we, as a community, and especially Bloomfield and the town council, have done a phenomenal job with be, getting in front of what is a worldwide pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Coleman.
Well, quite simply, I think uh Bloomfield's done the best job in the whole region, if not in the state. I represent uh the town at the Capital Region Council of Governments where I sit on the policy board. And so I'm aware with all the other thirty-nine towns in the region have been doing. And I can tell you that a number of them have looked to Bloomfield for what it has done to implement the programs they have. And as a resident of Bloomfield, I applaud the town council and the leadership of the town for the efforts they have done. They put, they responded quickly, they responded accurately, and they responded directly. And they put in place processes for communication and delivery of services that is as good as anyone has put in in the state. Those are in place. They will carry forward. And I think um, no one can take their hats off higher than, than the folks in Bloomfield in responding to the COVID situation and being prepared for any future uh similar types of situations. The only other thing I would add quickly is that um, I believe that the, that the funds that the town are getting are obviously gonna be significant and ought to be used for, for significant non-reoccurring projects so that we don't put in place a funding situation where three years from now, when the money runs out, we have to figure out how to pay for it, which suggests that we put in place infrastructure projects or programs that have a date ending um so that we don't set up a situation for future costs. But again, hats off to the group that did, did the response.
Thank you. We'll move to the next question. What type of town do you envision Bloomfield to be in ten years as it relates to both development and open space? How will you ensure that racial equity is incorporated into any development or preservation plans? And for this question, we will start with Ms. Davis and then go to Mr. Curtin. You're unmuted.
So in ten years, um, I think that the town of Bloomfield will be just as great as it is now. I think we will have been able to add and enhance on the services that have been provided. I think we will have great leadership in place that will ensure that the town is definitely in a equi- more equitable place. I think our education system will be more vital because the work that we're intending to do right now and it's, and the work that is gonna have to continue, you know, um, will absolutely start today. So ten years down the line, um, I'm gonna still be in Bloomfield. I'm gonna still be working hard for the families. And I think that um, the most important part for me, again, would be that we ensure that we have a strong education system. We have reached out and put people in place and developments in place where families are moving into our town and they're flourishing, the parks are more beautiful. Um, the, 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 the Wittenberry Mall and all those places have been refurbished and are vital and viable, and people can go outside and feel safe and secure. And um, I think that it, all of that's attainable with you get perfect leadership in place. It's no such thing as perfect, but leadership in place that can make those things happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Curtin, and then Mr. Coleman.
All right. Thank you, Deb. I think that's a, a very important question. Um, and the way I would approach it um is that I believe the foundation over the last four years is in place when it comes to the future. Um, I believe that looking towards your infrastructure, uh, building a new state-of-art library system within the town, uh, working in a collaborative manner with um the private sector uh to be able to enhance our uh uh downtown area is important. I believe over the last five years, there've been an influx of uh new residents within the town of uh Bloomfield. But I, I wanna go back to one of the questions talking about equity. I think it's important when you look at the new developments within the town and uh just looking forward, we have to, as a local government, find ways with those developers uh to say, okay, certain percentage of those development have to be affordable housing uh for folks to live within uh the town of Bloomfield. So I think in forward-thinking and working uh with future developers within the town of Bloomfield, I think it's imperative to make sure that uh not only the wealthy could come and live in the center of town, but make it uh, uh affordable. And I say, take the model of, of Brooklyn, New York, where I'm from, uh, within the downtown area. They make sure with new development that they were a certain percentage within that development for affordable um housing. So I think those are the type of things that we have to do, and I think the foundation is in place uh over the last four years. And we have to continue, and I believe that this team here can uh move that momentum forward. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Mr. Coleman, and um after that, Ms. Debeathon Brown. Uh, you're muted. Mr. Coleman, you're muted.
There we go.
There you go.
I envision a, a, a Bloomfield ten years from now that is, that is vibrant, uh, successful. Uh, one where people are, uh, we have a, a thriving downtown. We have a world-class library system. We have a world-class school system. We have a world-class senior services system. We have a world-class youth system. We have a world-class health system. I can go on and on. I think one of the, I think a lot has been touched. I think people should know that we are blessed with uh an amount of open space on a per capita basis that is probably one of the best in the state of Connecticut. With our various large open spaces and small parks, uh, we have more per capita than almost any town in the state of Connecticut. And it's important that we continue to maintain it and make it usable for all of our residents. I also think that, I would hope that our efforts will attract, uh, maintain the youth in town and attract young families because we have an aging population in, in Bloomfield for whom we have to continue to provide and expand services. But I think we wanna try and put a hold on that trend, in my opinion, and, and make the town more balanced in terms of youth and um, and senior ser- and senior citizens uh going forward. But I think as, as Rickford indicated, I think the, 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 uh, the ground is solid to grow upon, and uh the services are there, and there's no reason that um, ten years from now, we can, we can say we did a hell of a job and the town is as exciting now as it's ever been. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Debeathon Brown, followed by Ms. Calhoun.
Thank you. That smile on my face is that everything that they have said so far is it. Ten years from now, Bloomfield will be a vibrant place to live, work, and play. We will have affordable housing for residents. We will have a thriving small business community. We will have a vibrant downtown, open space. Our parks, Philly Park will be done. Um, it's, it's important that we have a town that as, is as rich in diversity as it is now. It will just expand, that everyone from all walks of life will want to be here in Bloomfield because you have that really small-town community feel, but there'll be some vibrancy to the town. Things for our youth to do, for our young people to do, cafes, there might even be a gastro park in Bloomfield. Um, my imagination is huge. It's large when it comes to our town. And that's what he, that's what we're all saying, that we wanna champion this town to be the best town in the state of Connecticut. I know we're the nicest, Her Reader's Digest twenty twenty. But it's gonna be the best town because we're going to be inclusive of everyone. And everything that we do will have an equity lens to make sure that no one feels left out, to make sure that everyone feels seen, and that we are honoring the fabric of this wonderful, diverse town. Great library, great things for our seniors to do, great things for our youth to do, thriving businesses in the next ten years, and we are on that path. And we are on a great trajectory now to keep Bloomfield moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Calhoun, followed by Mr. Davis.
Um, thank you, Deb. Um, I, I would like to refer back to uh question number one that you uh asked early on about a passion. And I mentioned my passion was bridging that gap between our youth and our seniors. All of what has been said is wonderful. Um, I would love to see a community of our young people going down the street, knocking on a door. Mr. Smith, Ms. Jane, Ms., Ms., Mr. Miss, what do you need? Do you need for me to run to the store for you? Do you need for my mom or myself to go and pick something up? Just I'm knocking on your door to make sure that uh you're okay. Um, if there's a need for, for my family to your family, we're, we're welcoming to do that. Um, yes, as John has stated, um, there, there's a little bit of an imbalance between the two. But it doesn't mean that we are in no way putting our seniors out to pasture. It's time for more involvement um from our youth with them. Um, if they can handhold one of our seniors um with a text, with an email, um, let me show you how to get on TikTok just for your, um, you know, for your entertainment. But it's, it's, it's important that both sides come together. We, we were a community of such at one point in time, and it's not too late for us to go back to that. It's really important for one and the other to bridge that gap and to reach over. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you. Mr. Davis.
Yes. I get excited when I think about Bloomfield in ten years. Uh, I think the mayor said that what I see is, you know, there is a huge distinction in my mind between development and redevelopment with all of our open space. Uh, to date, most of the economic projects we've looked at and talked about have been redeveloped, redeveloped land, uh, not taking over the open space areas that we have. But John hit the nail right on its head when he talked about the per capita open space in Bloomfield compared to other parts of the state. We are at the top. Um, but when I, when I look at ten years, I'm going to start first with the center of town. I see a new light Prosser Library. I see a reinvigorated and complete Philly pond. I see a revitalized Winton Berry Mall that is green. People are walking, riding bikes, uh, doing everything that they need to do in the center of town that is walkable. And I also see a lot of that construction work being done by minority construction workers, right? Making sure that that work is equitable and fair with respect to those who are uh reaping the benefits of doing the uh economic work. But at the same time, I see a revitalized Blue Hills area, right? In ten years, I see restaurants, businesses, and I see the folks who live on Blue Hills just as happy about what's going on in Blue Hills as we are about the center of town because I think that is what it's going to take, and that is a type of investment and a commitment that we have to make in Blo- in Bloomfield. Uh, so that we are talking about fairness and equity and an inclusion. Uh, because I, I do think that there are lots of opportunities in that area to increase the look and make people feel more inclusive i- in our town. But I do think in ten years, you know, we have a top-rated school system. Uh, we have a top-notch library system, which we already have, and our senior services. But I think in ten years, you know, we are all feeling much better than, than we are today about our town. Thank you.
Thank you. We have um time for one more question. I'll ask you to keep your answers fairly brief um so that we can get this in before the closing statements. And the final question is, what do you see as the major concerns related to policing in Bloomfield? What is the role of the town council and how the police department is run? And for this question, we'll start with Ms. Debeathon Brown and then move to Mr. Davis.
Thank you. I'm gonna be trying to, try to be very brief. Um, I believe that the town council's role with the police department is support. And I believe that we also need to have some education. Um, back in the Stone Ages, when I was growing up, we had officer-friendly. We were, um, we didn't see the police as uh um something to be feared, but we saw the police as protectors. Their job is to serve and to protect. And I believe that we need to get back to community policing. One of the things that we've also done this year is we've made monies available to have a social worker in the police department because some of the issues that happen where police is called really just needs some social services, needs a mental health professional to help an individual out. I believe the role of the council is to provide support to the police, to provide support to our community, and to help to bridge that gap where our community is not fearful of the police and where the police is doing their job in serving and protecting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, followed by Ms. Calhoun.
Yes. I would just start out by saying a big shout out to the men and women in blue here in Bloomfield. I think they do a tremendous job and a difficult job. And like any job, there's always room for improvement. I am a huge proponent of open communications, right, uh, between uh law enforcement and the community. Uh, we need to do more of that to find out what the issues are that are concerned to the community as well as to hear from the law enforcement issue, uh, the issues that they see. Uh, and I know that uh with respect to the council's role, I really believe that the council is sort of managing the process that the town manager is in charge of. Uh, and so working through that because it's the town manager who is uh CEO, for all intents and purposes, over the police department, and the council needs to have a close view over that. But I think the, the council needs to listen to the community, but we also need to, to listen to law enforcement. And if there are serious crimes, do we do a cost benefit analysis to see, do we need new police officers? I know over the last year or so, there's been an increase in car thefts. I mean, is that due to COVID or is it, it seems to be sort of a statewide issue? Uh, but I do think that our men and women in blue uh do a terrific job. And I'm proud to say that I'm seeing more uh people of color on the police force, uh, which uh I think is a, a really good thing, is more symbolic and representative of our community. So I, I think we are moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Calhoun, followed by Mr. Coleman.
Um, thank you. Um, Bloomfield is a special place. Um, we currently have an extremely supportive um police department. Chief Hammond, Chief Hammack is, he's, he's world, I would consider him world-renowned. He can, he can be out there actually in recruiting or, and or supporting other, in another town. But we have him here in Bloomfield. Um, it's important that our residents- Um it's important that our residents, as Ben said, it's important that our residents are heard. Um as as we've, you know, I've been around just communicating with with some of our our community. Um they wanna know that if and when they have issues, the issues are being addressed right when they need them. Um not say an hour from then. But our police department, they address things on an emergency basis at all times. When they're called, they're there. We do have a diverse, we're we're becoming to be more diverse in our our police department. Um and it's it's just extremely important, as as we've been told. Um we invite everyone to our Public Safety Committee meetings. You will hear firsthand how things are done, how things are handled, unless there is an investigation that's ongoing and the chief cannot uh report on any of those items. But it's important that uh if everyone, anyone wants to find out what's going on here in Bloomfield, please connect up with some of our Public Safety Committee meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coleman, followed by Mr. Curtin.
Thank you. I think we all know how challenging um law enforcement is in today's age. And I think we're exceedingly fortunate to have probably one of the, if not the best, leadership team uh in charge of our police department here in Bloomfield. Um from the leadership and also the the men and women on the force um continue to do a superlative job uh in relating to and responding to the um law enforcement uh needs and requirements of the citizens of the town. I think in terms of the role of the council, I think our, the role of the council is to set the tone of how uh they would like law enforcement uh to be carried out within the town. I think that's its role. And then to su- and then to support that role being carried out by the police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Curtin and then Ms. Davis.
Uh thank you. Um I I will start off by saying that uh I echo a lot of the same sentiments from my colleagues um here. I have to say that over the last four years, we've, we we have a stellar police department. Obviously, we've seen across the country um issues with various police departments, but we don't have that here in Bloomfield. But it doesn't mean that we, we don't say that we can never see um some sort of uh issue in the future. But I believe that through the town manager is where the town, the the Town Council through policies, like uh John said, to set the tone. Um but overall, I believe that we have a good uh police department, uh very engaging. You see them out in the community. Uh when we have community events, they're very accessible uh to the community. And I think that um we just have to support the the men and women in blue. Um thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Davis.
Yes, I just, um the major concern that I had relating to the police department here in Bloomfield is the fact, I think Greg touched on it, that it's becoming a little bit more diverse. I think it's very important that the police department uh represents the community that it services. And I think that we are moving towards that a little bit more expeditiously. You know, as a mother of two black boys or men, you know, I've oh, I'm always been fearful of them just being out on the roads because of the climate that we've experienced with police, as some of my colleagues has mentioned overall. But I don't really feel that much concern um in Bloomfield. But it's outside of Bloomfield that there's an issue. But in Bloomfield, I think the the police department has done a phenomenal job. I know when I was on the PTO and I needed the community service officers to come up and talk about different issues. The chief was opening, sent his Lieutenant Fox over to talk to the schools on numerous occasions. So I feel very comfortable and confident that they're, that part that I mentioned earlier about effective communication. Because the only way we're gonna be successful in any of our entities that we do here in the town of Bloomfield, in any of the thick um places that we service as a town council, is have open communication so that everyone is aware. And I think that the police department in Bloomfield has done that as long as we continue to support them through the town manager. And as long as we continue to emphasize the importance of diversity on the force and make sure that they have a relatability to the people in the town here in Bloomfield that they serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will move to closing statements. Each candidate will have one minute to present his or her closing statement. And we will go in reverse alphabetical order. I also have a timer set, so you'll likely hear the timer go off, and then I will politely ask you to wrap up. We will start with Mr. Curtin and then next will be Ms. DeBeethen Brown. Mr. Curtin.
All right. Thank you, Deb. So what's at stake uh on September fourteenth is for us to continue moving Bloomfield forward. Uh I have to say fifteen uh plus years ago, my wife and I decided to move to the town of Bloomfield uh to start a family. Uh we have two uh young children. My son just started uh high school in the ninth grade, and my daughter is in the sixth grade in the middle school. Um we have been volunteering within our school system from day one. We believe that the the investment in our children's education is important as well as every other child within the town of Bloomfield. If we continue making uh smart economic development, continue to raise our grand list, we're gonna be able to meet the needs uh in the future of our uh for our next generation, the future of this town. And I believe that this team right here is positioned to do that. With the leadership of the last four years and with three new members joining us, uh I believe that Row B is the slate that will continue to move the Bloomfield forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Ms. DeBeethen Brown.
Thank you. Um I'm a champion for this town and advocate for every resident in the town of Bloomfield. We have been putting in the work for the last four years, for the last two years in order to help our town be the best town that it can be. Economic development, community care, quality of life, public engagement. We are on a great trajectory with all the work that we have started. And I believe that this team will be able to help to keep Bloomfield moving forward. We've had a lot of firsts this year, whether it was dealing with COVID nineteen, racial uprising, raising the pride flag, celebrating Juneteenth, um ra- uh celebrating Caribbean Heritage Month, celebrating the the diversity in our town and coming together as a community. There's a lot of work that has been done. There's a lot of work to do. And I believe that this team right here on Row B will help keep Bloomfield moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis, followed by Mr. Davis.
I am so very excited about this opportunity. I never thought in my wildest dreams that I would be here at a town hall positioning myself to be a candidate for town council. But what most important and what's been so overwhelming is that the opportunity to learn and grow. And I think that the people that I have been solicited to participate on Row B with are people that have been pillars in my community, people that have always supported everything that I wanted to do as a resident, as a advocate for the families, as a teen mom for all the sports scenes in town, as just uh just a common folk, an ordinary person wanting to do ordinary things. And I think that right now, my my feeling is that I'm so, the excitement is overwhelming because I've gotten to know them on a different level. I've gotten to know the community on a little different level just from canvassing and door knocking. And I know that I have it in me to be successful and to help our families and our community be successful because it's gonna take all of us. And again, I'm I'm very excited about it. And the the mayor mentioned that. Oh, that's it?
That's it.
Oh, since that went longer than me.
No, I've got the timer. I've got the timer going.
Very much.
Okay. Uh Mr. Davis, followed by Mr. Coleman.
Okay, I'm gonna speed talk here. Uh Deb, I would say first of all, uh I am here to serve. I have no aspirations beyond serving on Town Council. And I'm proud of the possibility, the opportunity to serve with this group. Everyone here on Row B is currently serving the town. We have three members on Town Council. John is chairing a committee. I'm chairing a committee. Pat is chairing. We're all currently engaged with what's going on in Bloomfield today. Uh I've been practicing law for more than thirty years, managing toxic torts and environmental litigation. Uh I do mediations, arbitrations, compromises. I'm a convener, a consensus builder, a team player. I'm a hard worker. And I can commit that this team, we will work hard and smart for all of Bloomfield. And Pat Davis said that she's just ordinary, but she's extraordinary. And so is everyone on this slate. So thank you so much and look forward to hopefully a positive resolution on the fourteenth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coleman, followed by Ms. Calhoun.
I I would just add that this is a critical primary. The slates are so different. And I think if the town wants to continue the momentum and move forward, um Row B is the vo- is who they need to vote for, and they need to get out and vote on the fourteenth. What I found is this, this is a deeply caring, very human group of people who relate to both each other, but particularly relate to the issues and concerns and needs of the folks who live in Bloomfield. And there's, in my opinion, a common commitment among all of us that I really feel for the betterment of the town. That's what they are, we are all, six of us equally are interested in. And we wanna see the growth and prosperity and openness of this community continue and go forward.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Calhoun.
Well, Deb, as a twenty-eight-year resident here in Bloomfield, I have been proven as stability. I am an advocate for my community. I implore each and every one of you out there that is listening and in hearing and my, hearing my voice. It's important that you become a volunteer as we have become volunteers in Bloomfield. September fourteenth, vote Row B. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for watching this forum. As a reminder, both sessions will be available for viewing on the League of Women Voters of Connecticut YouTube channel as you make your decisions about the upcoming primary. Another thank you to the league for coordinating and assisting. And thank you to the candidates for putting themselves forward to serve the town of Bloomfield. Please remember to vote on September fourteenth. Stay safe and be well.
Thank you, Deb, and thank you to the league.
Thank you, Deb.